Before we get started, I'd like to welcome our Chief Rich Austin to lead us in invocation.
Hello.
Let us pray together. Oh gracious Lord, thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us. Thank you also for those here in attendance, whether they be decision makers, staff members, or citizens, Father. Let us all work together for the greater good of this city. Please guide us, give us wisdom, give us courage, and help us as we work together for the good of all. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief Austin. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, July 9th, 2018 to order. Sudi, if you'll please call the roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the July 9th, 2018 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cellphones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Those called speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers, well, please identify themselves by name, address, and organization. The City Council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of an organized group or association, provided the individual has filed a notarized affidavit with the city clerk that they have the authority to speak on behalf of the organization prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Janison.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, want to welcome everybody for being here tonight. And Sudi, I'm going to ask you to sound the next item, which is the approval of the meeting agenda.
This item is the approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 18194.
Okay, and I would like to add an executive session to discuss land acquisition. And also, I believe staff wants to add an item for approval on the agenda, the consideration of adoption of a joint defense agreement regarding pending tax appeal litigation.
We're going to make a...
Put that.
That's item number your business.
New business, yeah.
We're going to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Koontz, second from Councilmember Morick, as for approval of the agenda, the meeting agenda as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. Could we have any public comment, general public comment?
Yes, sir, we do have two.
Okay, next item is general public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please step forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. And you'll have five minutes for remarks. Sudi, if you please call the first speaker.
Our first speaker is Mr. Tim Becker.
Good evening, Council. I am speaking tonight regarding the traffic situation at Birmingham Crossroads. My understanding is that the capital improvement element to be considered tonight does not include mention of the crossroads intersection. Simply stated, rush hour traffic into the crossroads is a nightmare, and it's getting worse. The hours of gridlock are 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 3:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. But these periods are expanding. Cut-throughs are well-known and well-used. In May of 2007, I addressed council on the cut-through traffic on the northeast corner. I conducted a poor man's traffic study of traffic going west and then north. I found that around 72-hour, or cars per hour, cut through the northeast corner. Compare this to the 210 westbound cars that make a right turn at the crossroads intersection. This means that over 25% of westbound traffic that proceeds north at the crossroads is cut-through traffic. Making matters worse, these cut-through drivers are generally more reckless than drivers for whom the northeast corner is a destination. Cut-through drivers are more likely to be traveling at a high rate of speed, to disregard the stop signs, and to zigzag through the complex. So the gridlock at the crossroads is not just an inconvenience for local residents, it is a safety issue. Please make implementation of a crossroads traffic solution a priority. Thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, if you please call the next speaker.
The next speaker is, I'm going to read a comment. I have, in possession of an affidavit authorizing reading of this public comment. It is by Judy Byrds, who resides at 1165 Bream Drive, Milton, Georgia. She states, "In reviewing the Capital Improvements Element, CIE, 2018 Annual Update Draft of July 9th, 2018, I noted that many intersections less congested than Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road had capital earmarked for improvements on page 10. This included other intersections that also involve planning with GDOT. I am looking to you to assure that any needed funds in the coming five years for the Birmingham Crossroads are projected in the 2018 CIE updated annual plan. Best regards, Judy Byrds." And that's all, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to consent agenda. Sudi, if you'll please sound the items.
This item is approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending May 2018, Agenda Item Number 18195. Next is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia, and Superior Fence of Georgia LLC for a city hall fence, Agenda Item Number 18196. Our third and final consent agenda item is approval of a change order, number one, to the professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Barge Design Solutions, Inc. for an update to the citywide parks and recreation master plan and the master plan for Providence Park, Agenda Item Number 18197.
Okay, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, and I believe from, a second from Councilmember Koontz, that I heard first. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, if we can move on to reports and presentations. Sudi, if you'll please call the item.
Tonight, we have a proclamation recognizing MDA, City of Milton firefighter appreciation. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, thank you. The Muscular Dystrophy Association's proprietary Fill the Boot program is supported by the fire departments across North America. This simple street-side collection campaign provides an easy and convenient mechanism for commuting Americans to make a contribution to one of America's most beloved charities, by America's most beloved heroes, the firefighters. This year marks 64 years for this American tradition. Since 1954, firefighters have raised $558 million for MDA. Over the last 12 years, the City of Milton Fire Department has collected over $726,000 from generous citizens for local children and adults living with muscular dystrophy, ALS, and related life-threatening diseases, with approximately 2,400 patients registered in the greater Atlanta area. The support of the Fire Department hits close to home. In 2017, the department raised $79,348, which was the highest in the metro area, metro Atlanta area, and the second largest in the state of Georgia. During the 2018 campaign, the City of Milton raised a record-breaking $87,075. The public service resulting from this labor of love is nothing short of incredible. Tonight, we're fortunate to have Abney Ruffner, Executive Director of MDA Atlanta, and she's excited to support the department year after year, and is here with us in the audience along with the MDA Ambassador of Families, Kyle Eggleston and his family, Hannah and Austin Stacks and their family, and Holly Sorrels. Also, please welcome Chief Bob Edgar and members of the City of Milton Fire Department. And after I read this proclamation, I'd like to ask everybody to step forward to receive them. So I have before me here a proclamation, the MDA City of Milton firefighter appreciation. Whereas dedicated and selfless firefighters in Milton provide vital and life-saving services to the citizens of their community, and whereas at a moment's notice, these men and women risk their lives, subduing fires and rescuing those trapped in infernos, as well as saving citizens from emergencies that could have been deadly situations, and whereas Georgia firefighters contribute significantly to the continued well-being of Georgians throughout their outstanding commitment to community service, their sense of duty and responsibility is evidenced by their hundreds of volunteer hours and annual boot drives to collect funds to fight muscular dystrophy. And whereas firefighters in the City of Milton unselfishly donate their time and energy to support the Muscular Dystrophy Association, raising more than $726,000 over our 12-year partnership. And whereas many of Milton's most deserving citizens have benefited from the funds raised by firefighters in the Fill the Boot campaign, and these public servants make invaluable contributions to our community in all the tasks they perform. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton, hereby proclaim April through September as MDA firefighter appreciation time in the City of Milton and encourage all citizens of Milton, Georgia to recognize and support the efforts of these firefighters on behalf of MDA. And this is given under my hand and the seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on the 9th day of July, 2018. And with that, I'd like to ask everyone involved to step forward, along with the council, for a presentation.
Councilmembers, would you mind if I asked fire to go up around? Or would you all prefer to go up and stand?
Yes, I didn't realize you had such a long break. I misjudged.
Well, we're going to have to shake some hands.
Yes, absolutely. Mingle, and then I will take the photo. My apologies, I misjudged the size of the photo. Okay, Council, if you will go, if you'll go back. Sorry. Yes, let's do that. That way I can get a really good facial. Yes, do you mind? I'm sorry, I misjudged the size of the photo. And that's my fault, my apologies.
She took one look at your knees, Rick, and she said, "Stop."
Council, if you will stand in front of your chair, and the chair behind you. And then tighten, tighten up behind, there you go. If you'll hold the proclamation, we're still with the bottom. No, you can keep it closed, but if you'll hold your old seat at the bottom.
You guys in the audience all know this from Christmas pictures, right?
I'm earning my keep here. Okay, all right, we're looking right here in just one second. Perfect, great. One, two, three. Let's do one more. One, two, three. Hold it right there, don't move. Let's do one more. One here, one, two, three. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you guys so much for being here. I also want to thank, you know, again, thank our firefighters for taking their, volunteering their time to raise money for such a good cause, to help out deserving folks, as well as our citizens who generously give, that put money in the boot. So thank you very much. It's quite an honor. All right, Sudi, will you please sound the final report and presentation item?
This item is discussion of the Capital Improvement Element, CIE, and the draft transmittal resolution. Ms. Michelle McIntosh Ross and Mr. Bill Ross of Ross and Associates.
Okay, thank you, greetings. I'm Michelle McIntosh Ross, and I'm here to introduce Bill Ross with Ross and Associates. He's our consultant for the Capital Improvement Element, also known as the CIE, and our impact fee consultant. Who, he will brief you on the 2018 CIE document, the state requirements, and answer any questions that you may have. There he is.
Hello, again, this is getting to be a regular annual thing, isn't it? This is the annual report that's required by the state for any community that has impact fees. Basically, the report is, what money did you take in? What did you do with it? How much you got left? And where are you with regard to the projects that were, that were scheduled? As a general statement, you're doing just great. You've got a fantastic finance director, you've got a fantastic planning department. I, I should be paying you, not you, me, I'm not too sure. I would like to say this, now that your next, at your regular meeting, you'll be having a public hearing. Because the state requires that you have a public hearing on this, this annual report before you send it in for DCA review, and then you wait for them to, to respond. I would like to mention this. The annual report is based entirely on the last community Capital Improvements Element, the CIE. And you adopted the last CIE, I think it was 2015, Michelle, was it 2015? It was a few years ago.
2016, yeah.
And so the report can only be based in, on the projects in the last approved CIE. We have already had discussions, or staff has had discussions with us, about updating that CIE next year. Because, as you've already heard earlier in this meeting, there are other projects that are coming forward, there are other projects that citizens are interested in. So it won't affect the, the annual report this year, but I would encourage anyone who has concerns about intersections or streets or whatever to get it into the staff in writing so that when they update the whole Capital Improvements Element, and I think next year is on, is, is in sight, that those projects are considered for inclusion. Meanwhile, we can't add new projects to this because it's just an update report to let the state know, what'd you get, what'd you do with it, how much you got left, what projects have been completed or are still on schedule for, for improvement.
Is there any questions?
I have some. So we had a couple of public comments on the Birmingham Crossroads, which I just wanted to ask why that wasn't included in the first round. I know this, I understand that this is an update, but is it, could you just explain that?
Right, that was a project that was intended to be funded by GDOT. So our Capital Improvement Element and our original Capital Improvement Program represents projects where the city has a funding portion of that. And at that time, the intersection improvements were a project that was going to be a straight GDOT project, so it wasn't in that original Capital Improvement Element. And at this point, as far as we know, it is still a GDOT project.
Okay, and we're still waiting for that update?
Correct.
Okay. I had a question about State Route 9 in Bethany Bend. There was a small amount in there, $173,000. Is that to complement the widening of the...
We have a project to do some intersection improvements, some safety improvements that would hold us over until the widening project. We've been working with GDOT on that also, so they've been going through with some of their contractors to try and get that scheduled. But there are some minor striping and signal changes that we had proposed to them to improve the operation of that intersection until the widening came in. So that's what that represents.
I just had a question about also the, I saw in here that the Chadwick landfill was part of the parks, and that was one that we had selected monies, or fees to go towards. And is there, could we get an update on that?
The fees that those went to originally, we knew that the park at some, or the landfill at some point would reach its capacity. And there was an opportunity for the city to participate or have some sort of park component at that location. And so the original Capital Improvement Program tried to recognize some money going towards that project, although there wasn't a specific project identified at that time. We're continuing to work with Waste Management on what goes on at the, at the site, as well as what the life of the site is. And so those, that funding, I don't know if it has carried over over the years from the initial Capital Improvement Element, but that would represent some opportunity that may exist at the site, but has not yet been specifically identified.
It's been carrying over as a placeholder.
Okay.
But Sudi, is there any update on timing on that?
We met with Waste Management recently, they're still, according to the state, they're still scheduled potentially for a June, June 19? I think that's right. Closure, but, you know, I don't know what, whether us creating a park there is a reality or not. We just had some basic conversations. I know that quite some time ago, you had some serious discussions with them, but I think that they are going to be seeking other uses of the property as well. So I think, I think that remains to be seen.
Okay, anything else? From Bill or Michelle? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. All right, Sudi, next item's first presentation, if you'll please sound the item.
This item is consideration of an ordinance to revise the alcohol code to allow Sunday sales by the drink between 11:00 a.m. and 12:30 p.m., conditional upon voter approval, to repeal ordinances in conflict, and set an effective date. Agenda item number 18198.
Okay, do I have a motion? The first presentation item?
We're going to make a motion that we approve the first presentation item as read.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Koontz, and I believe a second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, tonight, we have no items under public hearing on our zoning agenda, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Sudi, if you'll please sound that item.
This item is consideration of an ordinance to revise noise restrictions impacting the use of consumer fireworks, to repeal ordinances in conflict, and set an effective date. Agenda item number 18190. First presentation was heard at the June 18th regular city council meeting. Chief Rich Austin.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. A statement was presented back on June 18th. A primary purpose of the ordinance provision is to bring us in alignment with the new law. This will allow our officers to have the authority to take enforcement action on fireworks that are being too loud and using more outside the dates and times otherwise predicted by the state law.
Okay, are there any questions? Mayor?
Obviously, there's the law itself, but then the enforcement of it. And so I've got some questions from some residents. If they hear fireworks, it's hard to tell where they are exactly, but they're loud enough, they can hear them over a certain, especially in my area where you can have them in Cherokee and not even know, not know if they're there, or in Fulton, or in Milton, or whatever, so. The, the question is, is how would they go about enforcing that? Just call 911, call you, is that the right answer?
Or the non-emergency line.
Right.
Or will we have to respond? Sometimes we get multiple calls on those, which make it a little easier for us to find them.
Okay. Sure, sure.
So I do encourage citizens to do that, and we'll check around.
Okay, thanks.
Have you noticed just any difference between this year, currently this last week, versus the past?
I do note, the third and the fourth were both open days. According to the new state law, we had nine halls total. Eight were within the parameters, only one outside. Those folks were going a lot of times across the drive.
Any other questions? Rick?
Just a comment on the, the fourth. I was driving through downtown Elphoretta, coming back into Milton, and it looked like the streets were totally filled with smoke. But I noticed when I got to our subdivision, where I live, I was just pulling in. You did have a police officer there. There was a group of people actually doing fireworks in a cul-de-sac. And I think it helped having an officer at least around if there was any issue, and it helped with traffic control. So I just wanted to appreciate, say, appreciate you guys just stopping in and being aware and taking care of that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Laura?
I have a question about the vendors that come to Milton to set up shop temporarily to sell fireworks. So is that a permit that they, they should have, and we check that?
Yes, they, they do have to be permitted. We actually checked out one recently.
And are those, are those for just consumer fireworks? Or, I'm assuming you can't get commercial-grade fireworks on the street? Is, okay.
I don't know if I can get that information for you.
So, okay, my question is that I, you know, what I'm hearing, I, it sounds pretty big. And that was last night, so I just would like to have that conversation about, you know, the consumer versus the commercial grade. When we do have commercial-grade fireworks shows, I think it would be good to, you know, I'm assuming that requires some sort of permit? If it does require a permit, then it would be great through our communications department to let our residents know, since we do have such, you know, we have farms here. That's just a suggestion. And then I just wanted to thank, and I don't want to steal Shannon's thunder, but we had quite a lively conversation on Facebook over fireworks for the past two weeks, and I appreciate that conversation because no matter where you are, and I appreciate a good celebration, but it, I think it was a great opportunity to share in the conversation, so.
Okay. Yeah, Chief, if you don't mind, maybe get some info to the council on, you know, what the draw, what the line is between commercial and, and consumer fireworks.
Certainly, we'll do that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. I'll open up for a motion on that item, then.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to revise noise restrictions impacting the use of consumer fireworks to repeal ordinances in conflict and set an effective date.
Okay, do I have a second? All right, I've got a motion from Councilmember Bentley for approval, with a second by Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous, Sudi. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. Sudi, if you'll please sound the next item.
This item is consideration of a resolution to dissolve the Milton Cultural Arts Committee and to recognize the work of its members. Agenda item number 18199, Ms. Sarah Ladart.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight to discuss and request the dissolution of the Milton Cultural Arts Committee. You guys have it in your executive summary, but in October 2016, we voted to form the Cultural Art Committee with the intent of, to advocate for, promote, and participate in the selection and interpretation of cultural artwork and cultural art events to encourage... to encourage local exploration, generate civic pride, showcase local artists, and increase tourism for the city of Milton. The committee that, or, yeah, the committee that you guys brought together has on their own funded the creation of a new five-oh-one C three that will increase their opportunities for grants and the collection of donations. I had Bill Purdy here, our chairman, to talk to you a little bit more about that, but at the end of this, what we're asking is that you guys dissolve the Milton Cultural Art Committee and that we formally give our support to the Milton Arts Council.
Okay, and I'd just also clarify for, this is a good thing.
It's a very good thing.
It's not, we're not dissolving the committee because of negative things.
Not at all. We consider this a success, so.
Thank you, Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Bill Purdy, Chairman of the Milton Cultural Arts Committee. Since my last presentation to council on January twenty-ninth of this year, our committee has continued to try to refine and define our goals for an arts program in the city of Milton. One of our goals was to create a nonprofit organization capable of raising funds, which was a limitation of the Cultural Arts Committee. So on May first of this year, we created the Milton Arts Council, Inc. It's a certified Georgia nonprofit corporation. My role in that corporation is the president at the current time. The board of directors of this corporation consists of the seven council-appointed members of the Cultural Arts Committee, plus three other directors. One is an attorney-at-law, who provides pro bono services to us and our corporation, a CPA who provides us with the financial information, advice, and accounting services, and Sarah Ladart as a non-voting director, board member, and she will serve as the liaison between our corporation and council. The Milton Arts Council adopted on our first meeting articles on the corporation and bylaws that will support our federal tax filing as a five-oh-one C three corporation in about one year from now. To date, the council has, our council has conducted two arts programs. One was the Milton Scott Talent, the first show, went well. We were going to have the winners perform at the Milton Beach Bash, but apparently there was bad weather and we couldn't do it, but look for them at the Oktoberfest in, on October sixth, the Crab Apple Fest, rather. We did, we have acquired under our organization the Milton Literary Festival, which is scheduled for November. So in our first meeting, we discussed the parallel goals of the Cultural Arts Committee and the corporation, and they are basically the same, and we continue to pledge our partnership in maintaining visibility and transparency to council of our corporation's activities. So in summary, I have two requests for council. One is the, we request the dissolution of the Milton Cultural Arts Committee and your continued support of the Milton Arts Council. That is my presentation. Any questions or comments?
Any questions for Bill? Mayor?
I just want to say congratulations.
Thank you.
As a, as a former president of a five-oh-one C three, and Peyton, I believe you were for the Crab Apple Festival, Crab Apple Community Association, it's, it's a huge labor of love, but this is exactly what we want to see for some of our organizations that can grow and become on their own and actually inspire us, you know, with the ways that you think is most important. I think a lot of times our five-oh-one C threes can operate efficiently because you don't have some of the restrictions that we might have here in government as well, so I think that it's a very good thing that you're doing. I think it's best for our community, you can get all the volunteers, so I just look forward to the things you're doing. I think it's great you're taking over the Milton Literary Festival as well. It's a great, yeah? I want to see you beat the DeKalb Literary Festival, so it's a long ways to go, but that's a big, very nice school.
We have ways to go to grow to that point, yes.
Exactly, so I just see big things for you, and I just want to say congratulations, and I definitely support this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, and all the rest of your committee members, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, I'll, if there's no other questions, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to dissolve the Milton Cultural Arts Committee, MCAC, and to recognize the work of its members, agenda item number one-eight dash one-nine-nine.
Okay. All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Kuntz for approval, with a second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, this has got to be one of our shortest meetings in, in history, but any, anything council wants to report on tonight?
We have one, one item to add.
Oh, we did add, my bad. Okay. Suti, if you'd please call the next unfinished business item.
This item is consideration of the adoption of a joint defense agreement regarding pending tax appeal litigation. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have passed out to your station, certain amendments to add to the agenda, a joint defense agreement. As the council may be aware, there were two class-action lawsuits that were filed against Fulton County, the Fulton County Assessors Office, based upon the county-wide assessments conducted by Fulton County, challenging at least devaluations done over the last three years. Those lawsuits implicate not only Fulton County, the Assessors Office, but also every municipality in Fulton County. Needless to say, there is a, is this the right word, cacophony of lawyers involved? And in light of that, this is a fairly standard practice of all of the defendants have a commonality of interests, we're all sort of aiming toward the same target, but because of that, we need, in order for all of our respective conversations to be privileged, we need to enter into a joint defense agreement, which means that all of us can talk amongst each other without waiving the attorney-client privilege. It allows me to speak to you about information I've learned from other jurisdictions. You all have to keep that information private as well, as part of our common litigation defense strategy. I am requesting, as part of our defense of the city with respect to this class-action lawsuits, that the council approve this joint defense agreement that I have passed out to you this evening.
Okay, is there any questions for Ken on this? Everybody understand? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor?
Ms. Mayor, I'd make a recommendation that we approve the joint defense agreement as presented.
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Morick, with a second from Councilmember Kuntz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, I'll move on to council. Anything council want to report on before we go to staff reports? Okay, we'll move on to staff reports. I think we got Public Works first.
Do you have anything on there?
No, didn't bring slides, just, just the information here. So a quick update on the T-Spots program. At this point, we are at about eighty-seven percent of what was projected that we would bring in on that program, and we're almost a quarter of the way into the, the five-year tax. Our T-Spots Batch Two projects, which were Hopewell-Hamby and Hopewell-Thompson, those concepts are nearing completion. We've got a public survey out right now, and as of Friday, we had eight-hundred-and-ninety responses already. So that's a very good response, and first question we ask is, are you a resident of the city of Milton? And eight-hundred-and-twenty-five of those were residents, so. We'll be bringing those recommended alternatives forward August, September, after, after we finish the public input period. Let's see, then the Northeast Crab Apple Project is beginning the right-of-way acquisition process and wrapping up final design. Construction projects, we issued a notice to proceed today for the Morris at Webb Road Roundabout, and Freeman Village Providence will be coming in the next week or two, that notice to proceed. And then some upcoming construction, we've got two projects that were identified with GDOT as what they called a quick-response project, which moves a little faster than their, their typical process. It's been about two years since we had those initial discussions, and by the end of July, GDOT should issue a notice to proceed for some left-turn lanes on three-seventy-two at Batesville and three-seventy-two at Green. So that is an update of what's going on.
Anybody have any questions for Sarah? Cora?
For the Bethany's, Bethany Way, Hopewell, the, the timeframe for that, we're in, what's it called, review?
So that was one of the T-Spots Batch One projects. So we did the traffic counts and have the consultant onboard. We went through a peer review, so when some of the alternatives are more complex, we have another, an outside engineering firm look at them. They've just wrapped that up last month, so the, our design consultant's now reviewing those reports, and we should be finalizing those concepts by early fall. So we'll do similar to we did with the Batch Two, we'll do a public input survey to list the, the different types of improvements to get feedback on.
So public input survey in the fall?
Yes, hopefully.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Sarah. Next is Fire, Chief Edgar.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I was just going to say eighty-seven thousand dollars and drop the mic, but I figured, I've got a couple of things that I'd like to share with you. Three of our staff members attended the MDA Summer Camp Program, which some of the funds that collected during the boot drive helped fund and send those children to that particular camp, was specific to special-needs kids. So we attended that as we have in the past, and they always have a great time and show a true appreciation for what we do. So it's, it's very, a very great camp for the kids. I'd like to thank Councilmember Laura Bentley for her assistance with our horse training program. We had many new firefighters that had never even encountered or had come face-to-face with a horse before, so she was able to help us kind of calm the nerves a little bit, I should say, and put all our folks through that training, as well as assisting us with getting some donations from hampsters, new halters for all our trucks. In the event a horse is loose in the community, we're able to corral that horse and bring it back safely to the homeowner. We had a vacancy in a department we just recently filled with a new female, new female firefighter, Chelsea McDonald. She's a paramedic, state-certified, and she started the Fire Academy today, and will be back out on the street in about ten weeks. And Jason Howard, our chaplain, we spent three days and visited all the firefighters and get to know him and get an opportunity for them to talk to him, so kind of set the groundwork up front for them in case they have any needs for him or want to do a call-out for him, so. And the PO's been issued for the final tornado siren for Wood Road and Birmingham Highway. And the final thing I've got is that we've finally completed our purchase, if I can get this to come up. Oh, it disappeared. Is it there? Okay. This is our new ATV for the department. It has the capabilities of transporting a patient. You can see the stretcher on the back, and that will give us access to Birmingham Park. We've had several calls back there where folks have fallen off horses and broken limbs and such, and it's quite the task to carry somebody out of there because our, our trucks just simply cannot get back into the park back there. So this will be able to gain easy access, and then you'll see the other device that firefighter Gomez is holding there. That is like a wheelbarrow, that, that stretcher will actually sit on that, it's like a, a wheelbarrow, and it sits on there, so we can actually get down into some really tight trails to roll the patient out, get them onto the ATV, and then get them up to medical so we can go ahead and get that patient transported. And this can also be used for special events and such, Crab Apple Fest and some of the others, as well as some of the other parks, that we have the capability now to transport this by trailer to some other areas in the city that we can use it for, so. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Chief? Thank you, thank you again. Shannon, Communications. Last but not least.
Always follow fire, right? So it's tough. So I will tell you, Mayor and Council, I do have a few PowerPoint slides, but they will be brief, we'll go through real quickly. See if they come up. There we are. So as far as email communications, we continue to see increases in our open rates and our click rates, our efforts, or my efforts to continue to encourage residents to seek out information directly from the city, to make sure that they have the most current and up-to-date information, and that they get those, that information from us firsthand continues. So we continue to receive a, a good bit of positive feedback in terms of the content of those emails, specifically the FAQs, and that information that's being shared. As far as Twitter, we continue to see growth. It's not about the numbers, though, we talked about that each time, it's more about the interaction and the engagement. So we see good retweets in terms of road construction, road closures, which is very much what the platform for Twitter is intended for, and we also are seeing an increase in terms of citizens engaging with us and asking questions, not necessarily specific to Public Works, but sometimes. We also, in terms of Facebook, continue to see an increase. We have very limited unlikes, even at the lowest point in the snapshot at the bottom, those are our three unlikes. So even then, we average about one per month, which is very low. So I wanted to update you a little bit on our paid fireworks campaign. We did something a little bit different this year. Instead of a, a print ad, we thought we would try a social media campaign, and so we went out with a single ad, worked with a graphic designer to create a unique graphic. We targeted specifically Milton residents, and then pulled that radius out, just out around the city limits into the surrounding counties and surrounding cities, so that we could reach those who might touch our city or some of our farms, and so out of that, just for the seventy-five-dollar paid boost, we reached over six thousand people, and we engaged about five-hundred-and-fifty-four times. Those were primarily more women than men, which was interesting. And then out of that, you can see how that breaks down in terms of whether they commented or shared, and this is just the paid reach, which I'm about to show you, the organic reach, which was pretty powerful. It certainly isn't as good as Fire and the news they usually share, but I feel like I've got a great story tonight, so I'm excited. So in terms of organic reach, what do we do? We reached almost seven-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand people. So out of that, you can see that most of this was organic reach, and we had a significant number that shared, so over twelve thousand times, this particular post was shared. And then in terms of campaign comments and the feedback we got, our residents thanked us for it. Sometimes they pointed out our shortcomings in terms of, they felt that there should have been a focus on animals, small animals, as well as vets, veterans, and then some said it, they did see an improvement, anecdotally, others said that they didn't. We reached as far as the UK, we touched a number of states, and a lot of that was from our residents sharing. And then we also had local horse farm, or horse owners that engaged with us, and we even initiated a little bit of positive peer pressure with someone tagging Forsyth County to share the post. Out of education and awareness, what I think was some, most unique about this is that instead of the city communicating the potential hazards for horse owners or equestrian owners, you actually had equestrian owners themselves, some living here, some living across the US, who shared personal stories, and some of them were very impactful. And then in terms of the campaign benefits, it allowed us to interact and engage with our residents about the noise ordinance, about the state law, which was, which was helpful, and even on some unrelated city business. What are the unintended benefits, which I really never anticipated this, I never anticipated that it would reach that many people, almost seven-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. These are just two snippets, but we presented ourselves across the US as Milton, as an equestrian-friendly community, and as we look at ways to retain our equestrian farms, I think we've had an unintended benefit just simply from this campaign that cost us seventy-five dollars, so I think that's a, definitely a plus. In terms of traditional media, we've held the Milton cover over the last year. I haven't presented in a while, so I, I couldn't remember where we'd actually left off, but we've held the cover for nine weeks. We've had positive pickup by some of our print. Television obviously has been limited, but typical, it's usually police-specific, noise ordinance, fireworks-related. I continue to provide departmental support, I won't read these to you. One of the things, sort of tagging on to Chief Austin, is that I will be working with the graphic designer to develop a one-page flyer that will distribute electronically so that residents have a better understanding of the state fireworks law, how it works with our noise ordinance, and maybe what their steps are for how they report it, or things to consider before they make the call, so it'll be an educational piece. So we'll work with the graphic designer on that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just have a, have a comment. So there, on, on that education piece, I think... So there, on, on that education piece, I think, thank you so much, because you can only put something out there if you're willing to respond to all the questions that you got. And I know you were responding on the 4th of July and that whole week, so thank you very much for the ongoing commitment to the responses. Education, the more information we can give the community about, you know, the more commercial firework shows, that is very valuable, especially if they're not the days that you think they would be.
Right. I will, absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd also thank you for your, during the holidays or weekends, whatever, you're one of the few families where your kids are going, "Mom, get off your phone."
That's because they're on their phone, too, so that's good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Anything else from staff? All right. Then by, we added by motion, or added to our agenda by motion, a second, to adjourn into an executive session to discuss land acquisition. Do I have a motion?
Let's move to an executive session.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Morik, second from Councilmember Coontz. On my favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, so we'll step back there and discuss land acquisition, and hope to
Here's one. I do have a motion to reconvene.
Reconvene?
So moved.
Yes.
I have a motion and a second to reconvene. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes with four council members, Sooty. Do you need to know their names?
No, I got it.
Okay. All right, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes with four council members. Thank you, guys.